Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call to order the August 21st, 2023 Regular Board of Aldermen Meeting, but everybody please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka.
Here.
Alderwoman Tice.
Here.
Alderman Waggie.
Here.
Alderwoman Sims, absent. Alderman Lockmiller.
Here.
Alderman Gould.
Here.
Five members are present. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next up is approval or amendment of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Any objection to approving the same by acclamation? Seeing none, it will be so approved. Thank you. Down to item four, announcements, appointments, proclamations, and recognitions. We have quite a few. The first is to address the vacancies of the Ward Four alderpeople. As you see on my right and left, we have vacancies. The last Board of Aldermen meeting, which was July 17th, I believe it was, was the last meeting for Alderman Jack Shelton, who was here in attendance, and Alderwoman Kathy O'Neal, who I believe is now probably somewhere in Colorado. I had an opportunity. We had a number of people who were interested in serving these two positions. And the way that it works is like when I filled some other vacancies, that person would fill the vacancy for the remainder of that unexpired term. So for this spot, that would be through April or up to April of 2024, and this would be April of 2025. Like I said, there were three people who were interested, and I met with all of them, and they're all three wonderful people, one of whom decided to withdraw their name because of just time commitments after meeting with me, and they said, you know, it might be a little too much. But that's okay, because the other two that we had, I was very, very happy with. And the first is Sharon Harder. And Sharon, excuse me for a second. I'm going to read a quick bio for Sharon. "To the Board of Aldermen, I am appointing Sharon Harder to fill the unexpired term of Jack Shelton. In support of this nomination, I submit the following to the Board. Sharon and her husband have lived in Brentwood Forest for 39 years, where they raised two children. Sharon's daughter attended McGrath and Brentwood High School. Sharon has a long history of serving others. She has been teaching since graduating from Maryville in 1977. Through the years, she taught 6th grade at St. Joseph in Manchester, 2nd grade at Oak Hill, Villa de Chen, and a McIlwada preschool when her kids were young. She also was a Girl Scout leader. From 1995 to 2009, she taught 1st grade at Our Lady of the Presentation. 2009 to 2015, she was a parent educator with parents as teachers in the Rittner School District. And from 2015 through present, she is a paraprofessional with Special School District and Early Childhood in the Lindbergh School District. Additionally, Sharon has served on a McIlwada Parish Council in the 90s and was president in 1993. As an elected representative, she has served on the Board of Directors in Brentwood Forest in 2013 and 2015 and attended meetings regularly. I trust this Board will agree with me that Sharon is an ideal person to represent the residents of Ward Four and will support this nomination." The other vacancy I want to fill is with Sullivan Erger. I don't have a similar bio for Sullivan, but I do have his CV if anybody cares to take a look at it. He is a highly qualified individual. He is somebody who has expressed his interest in getting involved in serving in representative capacity. He is a lifelong St. Louisan. I believe he's a graduate of Dismet. It's not much difference, is there, between Dismet and CVC? Is that right, Chief?
Oh, yeah.
And a graduate of Ole Miss, and he's in the finance industry, the bank industry, with helping companies with small business administration loans. And so I hope the Board will support that nomination as well. So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve both Sharon Harder and Sullivan Erger to fill the unexpired terms of Kathy O'Neal and Jack Shelton.
So moved.
Second. We're going to take those one at a time. So first up, let's try Sharon Harder. Can I get a motion to approve Sharon Harder to fill the unexpired term of Jack Shelton?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Is this a roll call vote, Mr. City Attorney? Voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then if we could do the same thing, can I get a motion to appoint or to accept the nomination of Sullivan Erger to fill the unexpired term of Kathy O'Neal?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So at this point, are we going to do the swearing in, Bola? Or Kelly, whoever's doing it?
I, Sharon Harder, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Missouri, the ordinance of Brentwood, and that I will faithfully and diligently demean myself at all times while serving as Alderman of Ward Four for the city of Brentwood, for which I am officially appointed on this day, on this 21st day of August 2023.
I, Sullivan Erger, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Missouri, the ordinances of the city of Brentwood, and that I will faithfully and diligently demean myself at all times while serving as an Alderman, Ward Four, for the city of Brentwood, for which I am officially appointed on this 21st day of August 2023.
All right. Onto the next appointments, and that is we have some vacancies on standing committees with the resignations of Jack Shelton and Kathy O'Neal. First up is to the Sustainability Commission. I am appointing Sharon Harder, Alderwoman Sharon Harder, to replace Kathy O'Neal. Bridget Burgland, who's a lay resident, to replace Melissa Bobin, and Chris Pulliam to replace Tika Shaw. Do we have any discussion on that? If not, can I get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All, okay. And if you, when you vote, if you just press the button so we can hear you, yeah, so when you turn, when you press it, it's on, they can hear everything you're saying. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. The Public Works Committee, I am appointing Alderwoman Erger to the Public Works Committee to replace Jack Shelton. On the Ways and Means Committee, I'm appointing Alderwoman Harder to replace Kathy O'Neal. And to the Public Safety Committee, I am replacing, or I'm appointing Alderman Erger to replace Jack Shelton. And finally, to replace the vacancy of Kathy O'Neal to the Library Board, I'm appointing Alderman Waggie. Can we get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second. Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Alderman Plufka, do you?
I had a question.
I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
But only if you're done.
Yes.
Public safety?
Public safety. If I didn't say it, I meant to ask, have, don't we have a vacancy on that?
We do.
Yeah.
But I thought you mentioned Public Works, not Public Safety.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, Public Safety was Alderman Erger.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. All right.
So Alderman Erger, you're going to be, Alderman Plufka is the Chair for Public Safety.
Thank you.
And let's see. So that brings us down, I guess that's all the appointments, and it brings us down to recognition of the Brentwood Fire Department personnel and Richmond Heights Fire Department. Chief Kottrell.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. Present on this very special award. I'm going to go ahead and ask members of the Brentwood Fire Department and East Central Dispatch to come on up if you were involved this day. Joining me will be Assistant Fire Chief Ed Burney, Director of East Central Dispatch Center Paul Jokerst, the other members I will announce here shortly. On Wednesday, July 26, 2023, Brentwood Ambulance 2517 and Richmond Heights Engine 2114 responded for a report of a patient with difficulty breathing in a Brentwood business. Prior to arriving on scene, East Central updated responding units that the patient was now in cardiac arrest with a bystander performing CPR. Crews arrived on scene in less than five minutes, finding a 61-year-old male patient in cardiac arrest. CPR was continued, and advanced medical care was initiated by all on-scene responders. Their quick actions and tireless efforts resulted in the successful resuscitation of this patient, who was admitted to the ICU at a local hospital. This patient continues to display improvements and is currently in a rehab facility undergoing rehabilitation. It is my honor to present a certificate of excellence to members of the Brentwood Fire Department, Richmond Heights Fire Department, they were unable to make it tonight, and East Central Dispatch Center for their outstanding professionalism and teamwork, which was displayed that day. From the Brentwood Fire Department, firefighter paramedics AJ Smith and Pat Shum. From East Central Dispatch, I have Amber Baxter, Stuart Braddell, and Lauren Wolf. Please help me in congratulating these individuals receiving their award.
And as a sneak preview, the next meeting, September 5th, we're going to have some announcements for some new police officers, especially our favorite police officer, a new police officer, and that is Red, the super dog, our new police dog. So you'll have an opportunity to meet Red if you show up at the September 5th meeting, as well as our new officers. We have one more item. Let's save the best for last. Ms. Reed, if you want to come on up. I'm doing something I'm not supposed to do, and that is touch the microphone. You want to come, you can come up over here, dear. Thank you. I have the wonderful opportunity to issue a proclamation on behalf of Elaine Reed. So if you would, just bear with me for a second. Proclamation and recognition of Elaine Reed. Whereas Elaine Reed will be celebrated on September 3rd, 2023. What's that?
Second.
September 2nd and September 3rd, it's going to be such a big one, and honored by friends and relatives on the occasion of her 83rd birthday. And whereas she was born to Sam Reed and Mabel Louise Hamilton in St. Louis County on September 2nd, 1940, moving to 8732 Agnes Avenue in Brentwood at the age of nine years, and whereas she resided with her mother, Mabel Louise Hamilton, grandmother and step-grandfather Lula and James Stone, and attended elementary school at Lowature in the Brentwood School District, becoming one of the first African-American students to attend Brentwood High School in 1954. And whereas she grew up and raised her family in the Evans Howard neighborhood, helping hold the community together, and is believed to be the oldest living African-American member of the Brentwood community at 75 years and counting. And whereas during a long and productive lifetime, she demonstrated her commitment to the community in countless ways by hosting national night out events, being a welcoming hostess to community members. Dedicated to the welfare of others, she has earned the respect and affection of people from all walks of life, in all ages. And now therefore, be it resolved that I, David A. Dimmitt, Mayor of the City of Brentwood, do hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to extend the certificate of recognition to Elaine Reed on the occasion of her 83rd birthday. With sincere congratulations and best wishes for many more happy years in the future.
Thank you.
But wait, there's more. On behalf of the Brentwood Historical Society, we would like to present you with this honor for being a 75-year resident of Brentwood, Missouri.
And I would like to say to all the Brentwood residents that are here, to my police chief over there, Joe, that I appreciate it, and I will continue to do everything I can for Brentwood and works. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us down to item five, public hearing. We have two matters. First is public hearing on the text amendments to Section 400, Division 7. So with that, I will gavel open the public hearing for the text amendments to Section 400, Division 7, Stormwater Management, Grading and Erosion Control, and 500, Article 17, Infill Development Stormwater Management of the City's Code of Ordinances on the Proposed Modifications to the City of Brentwood Stormwater Infill Development Ordinance and Permitting Process. Whitney?
Letting the crowd pass us by.
Okay.
So I have here tonight, he can walk you through his presentation that he presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, if you would like. This did pass the Planning and Zoning Commission and Public Works Committee, and they recommended approval at your, for the Board of Aldermen. So. Can you hear me now? Okay.
What's that?
We're just connecting. PowerPoint is in your packet if we want to just follow along there. It's under the new business category instead of the public hearing. Right.
Okay, I'm just going to go ahead and go through my PowerPoint, and hopefully you all can follow along. So like Whitney said, I'm Tony Shank with Gonzalez Companies. About a year ago, Gonzalez Companies finished up a stormwater master plan for the city of Brentwood. And as a part of that stormwater master plan, we had, we identified several areas of your ordinances that we felt like could use some improvement through our investigation of some problem areas. So tonight, I'm going to go over the highlights of those ordinances that we felt like could be improved, focusing on Sections 400 and 500, which are your stormwater management and grading and erosion control ordinances, as well as the infill development ordinances. So the last time I gave this presentation, it took probably over a half an hour, so I'm going to try to go a little bit quicker than that tonight for you. And if I'm going too fast, please go ahead and stop me. The first section that we recommended for improvement is 400.2650. And in this section, you have a land disturbance permit. Your current language says that you only need a permit if you're disturbing over an acre of ground. What we had noticed during our stormwater master planning is that areas much less than an acre were causing a lot of problems, and there wasn't any teeth in the ordinance to enforce proper erosion control, which is what the land disturbance ordinance would require. And so our recommendation would be to move that down to 10,000 square feet of disturbance to allow for, again, some better mechanisms to have control. In the presentation there, I give pros and cons. I give cost considerations for each of those. I'm hoping that you guys can just, can read those, and I'll just continue to move on. Section 400.2660 has information about datums. Datums are how the surveys are conducted whenever I have, we have plans that come into the city that need to be reviewed. And so datums are really important so that we can compare apples to apples. And we just want to make the ordinance more clear, to use the most current standard state plan coordinate system, rather than be a little bit ambiguous, which it is now. So that's the recommendation, is to give the specific datum to be used, rather than a datum. Section 400.2680, this is a section under stormwater design standards. Currently, your ordinance says that overland flow routes must be evaluated, or should be evaluated, for storm events of 25 or 50 years. And so these storm events, 25-year storm event, 50-year storm event, that really just means that you have, you know, a certain percentage of potential for this storm to happen at any given year. And what we're seeing is that, you know, storms like 100-year storm events don't happen every 100 years, right? It's a 1% chance to happen any year. We've had multiple 100-plus-year storm events over the last few years even. Whenever we have these rain events that are this large, the drainage systems aren't designed to handle all of that water. And so what happens during these large rain events is that water must seek an overland flow route, okay? And so these overland flow routes are ways for the water to go around houses to avoid, you know, to avoid damage to structures specifically. And so what we're saying is that instead of a 25-year event, we should be really looking at a 100-year event for the, for the design storm, for the overflow routes. Again, what that does is it prevents damage to structures and actually brings the city's ordinance up to the standard of the industry. MSD requires 100-year routing for all new infrastructure. And so I've given, again, a couple of examples here on cost considerations. The overland flow routes shouldn't really cost additional monies, because we're talking about digging a ditch rather than creating a berm. And so the grading technique is how these overland flow routes can be constructed. There would be just some slight additional cost for engineering to analyze those routing events. And then as I go through the slideshow here, we get to a slide where I've got Pine Avenue as an example. On this particular roadway, during our stormwater investigation, we had found that there was multiple, multiple complaints from these residents here, because we've got one inlet on a low point of a road that can't accept all of the water. And as I go to about Slide 10, you can see the garage in the background, and the water would go down the driveway instead of into the inlet and straight into the garage, causing problems. If we had an overland flow route that was investigated before this infrastructure was in place, those damages would not have occurred. And so those are the types of examples for overland flow routes that we're talking about. This would only be for new infrastructure, new inlets, new pipes, reconstructions. So, you know, we're not talking about retrofitting the entire city, but this is new infrastructure. The next section is Section 400.2690, as well as 500.1790, maintenance agreements. Right now, the city doesn't have an ordinance that controls local stormwater best management practices, okay? And so during installation of a stormwater best management practice that is required by the stormwater infill development permit, to have these best management practices operate efficiently and effectively, they need to be maintained on a regular basis. Having a maintenance agreement would allow for the city to enforce those, that maintenance of those items. And the reason you would want this is because if these best management practices stop operating, they can actually cause further nuisance to neighbors, et cetera, by concentrating flows and et cetera. So the maintenance agreements, I believe, are really important, and they're, it's necessary to keep those best management practices operating efficiently. I've included a picture here that shows a best management practice that was not maintained, became clogged, and now we have ponding issues where we have nuisance of mosquitoes and et cetera. So trying to, you know, how do you get this resident to maintain this? Well, you have a maintenance agreement in place. And if they do not maintain it, it'd be similar to if they didn't maintain their yards. You can enforce corrective actions and hire somebody to maintain it for them, and then backcharge them. So the next section, 500.1710, I did not have necessarily a recommendation, but it was more food for thought for the Planning and Zoning Committee whenever I presented here. Right now, the ordinance says that if you have a net impervious increase by 200 square feet or greater, now this triggers the stormwater infill development permit that's required. So just for your information, a stormwater infill development permit, just to comply with that, we're talking about a cost of about $10,000. Between the engineering fees, the review fees, and the actual implementation of your stormwater best management practices, $10,000 is about what it would cost for a single car garage, okay? And if you wanted it to save maybe a double car garage or a new home, it's still not going to be much more than about $10,000. So even a very small patio, I've given an example here that's on the screen where we have a small 19 by 12 addition and a little front porch. have a small 19-by-12 addition and a little front porch, which is about, you know, it's 220 square feet. And before they ever started building their addition, they were well over $10,000 to comply with the permit. So the consideration here is maybe 200 square feet might be a little bit too small of an area. Maybe considering going to 500 square feet or something like that. Those are things to think about. Next couple of sections here, stormwater infill development permit procedures. Essentially, the procedure that's in place now does not match the ordinance. What I'm recommending is the procedure that is in place is great, and it works very well. Let's make the ordinance match the procedure. And then the next section, we have stormwater infill development permit fees, deposits, and violations. Again, we have fees and deposit information that's required. Part of the problem is that we have a lot of repeat offenders, which require additional reviews and additional administrative time. There's no way to recoup those costs. And so some of the suggestions here are to provide mechanisms to have these repeat offenders that are continuing to submit subpar applications for stormwater infill development permit to pay for their lack of compliance. Additionally, the deposit amount that's stated in the ordinance currently does not match the current procedure. Let's change the ordinance to match the current procedure that we have for deposit. And then correction of violations. Again, how do you get someone to fix a problem they knowingly violated? They did not install their best management practice. Currently, the ordinance says $100, $100 for correction. Whenever it costs the neighbor $10,000, doesn't seem appropriate either. And so they need to be charged what it actually costs to fix that, rather than just merely $100. So those are some of the recommendations there. Again, the full language is in the ordinance, and hopefully you can read through those. Next section, sump pumps and downspouts. Right now, the recommendation is that the discharge suggested to be 10 feet from the property line, but allows it as close to four feet. The suggestion here is to require it to be 10 feet, and only if, given a written variance by the chief building inspector, can it be less than 10 feet. In some situations, less than 10 feet is a real thing because you have a five-foot setback. And so that's where that four feet came from. But what the builder can do is they can make sure they're directing their stormwater downspouts and sump pumps away from their neighbors rather than dumping directly on to the neighbors. And sump pumps are a real problem as well because sump pumps, they run constantly, they create wet spots, they create icy situations. And so for all cases, the recommendation is that it needs to be 10 feet. Those are hard pipe situations, they're not gravity-fed. They can be directed 10 feet in all situations or into a best management practice.
Got a question for you on that.
Sure, absolutely.
The discharge, is there a requirement that it be into a pervious surface?
Correct. The requirement would be that it would be 10 feet from the property line onto a pervious surface, correct. So the example that I had given there was they're dumping it right out onto their driveway, and from the driveway, it leads to the roadway and the entire situation is icy. We're trying to avoid that in the future, correct.
Is that what's in the code currently?
Currently, it is in the code that it needs to be a pervious surface, but it doesn't say that sump pumps should be that 10 feet. They allow up to, you know, just the four feet from the property line.
Thank you.
And that was all the highlights I had, so again, I'd like to stand around for questions or...
Have any questions at this time? If not, there will be a first read. Yeah, go ahead, Brandon.
Yeah, Tony, Whitney, I mean, we had an open house with contractors. Can you provide any feedback you received from that event?
Yeah, so we had, I gave this same presentation as a public open house. We invited contractors, we invited the public. I didn't receive any comments at all, did you?
No, sir, I did not.
Anybody else, any questions? Alderman Gould.
Yeah, I have a question about the, I tend to agree with your, I guess, the proposal of potentially increasing the net impervious surface from 200 square feet to 500. Was there any discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission about that? Or did that just not really come up?
I think we presented it, and they were focused on passing the recommended language changes, and I don't think we discussed that really in...
Okay, so that just maybe just was an oversight on that part, and maybe that is something we need to discuss at the board level?
We did bring in, I mean, I specifically addressed this question in my staff report to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They didn't seem interested in changing, so I think they wanted to leave that up to you at the Board of Aldermen level.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So with that, I will close the public hearing on the text amendments to Section 400, and we'll move on to the public hearing for an amendment to the conditional use permit for the renovation to the exterior of the building in addition of outdoor seating at 1910 South Brentwood Boulevard.
Good evening, Whitney Kelly, on behalf of the city of Brentwood. This is for the maize and wheat. They had submitted an application to increase the interior seating and add exterior seating and a patio and make modifications to the exterior of the building. The Planning and Zoning Commission did get into the discussion of parking. The original CUP in which they originally opened under was under Applegate's, which received approval at the Board of Aldermen, and it didn't have sufficient parking at that time, and it was limited to 32 seats. The Planning and Zoning Commission felt that they are increasing the number of seats to 90 as part of their request. And the Planning and Zoning Commission felt that should, included a condition of approval that should the parking become a problem, that they would, under the board review, would have to lower it after consideration and discussion with the Board of Aldermen. But given that they were already pre-existing non-conforming, they felt that they could continue to operate.
Okay. Have any questions about this? All right, thank you, Whitney. We will close the public hearing for the conditional use permit for the renovation to the exterior of the building in addition of outdoor seating at 1910 South Brentwood. And we'll move on to Item 6, citizen comments. Anybody in the public here to address the board, now is the time to do so. You will be given up to three minutes. We just ask you come to the podium and state your name and address. Nobody? Okay. Then we will move on to mayor and Alderman reports. First up is the mayor. I have no report. Alderman Plufka.
The only report I have is to, first of all, welcome our two new Alderman persons, and then also to remind... I forgot who I got. Okay, sorry, thank you. We have a, this Wednesday is public safety at 5:30 in this room. Sorry, thank you.
All right. Alderwoman Tice.
Welcome to our new colleagues, and no report.
Alderman Weggie.
Yeah, welcome to the new people. Looking forward to working with you. We're gonna have a very special Public Works meeting on August 29th, where we'll be talking about a proposal for Project Clear. So we've had some of these projects in the last couple of years, and I think we can all say they didn't go that well. So I think we're gonna learn more. MSD will be talking about their proposed project, what they're planning to do. It looks massive. So I think it's important that we get ahead of this and understand what they're planning and make sure we're prepared. So come on out.
Thank you. Alderman Gould.
Welcome, and no report.
Alderman Lockmuller.
Would like to welcome you and Sullivan to the board, and no report.
Thank you. Alderwoman Harder. And Alderman Erger.
Thank you guys for the warm welcome. I'm excited to serve the city of Brentwood.
Thank you. Brings us down to Item 8, city administrative report. First up is the Brentwood Bound update, Craig Schluter.
Good evening, Craig Schluter with Navigate Building Solutions. I'll be providing the Brentwood Bound update. Starting with construction costs, $581,298.07 was spent since the last Board of Aldermen meeting. Next is soft costs, $143,738.61 was spent on material testing, legal, project management, design, and surveying fees. And in the categories of funding, there is one update to the note. The expanded scope MSD Hampton Creek, MSD is reimbursing the city of Brentwood for a change order that was part of their project, so that amount went up by that change order. And then those funds are in process of coming to Brentwood in the near future, which will allow the funds received to also increase. The city received roughly $612,000 this week for the grant from MSD. We're just waiting for that larger section of funds from the Hampton Creek project, which hopefully are received in the next 30 days.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Craig? Thanks, Craig.
Thank you.
Next up is the Brentwood Bound Kerber Eck and Breckel report. Do we have somebody from them?
Thank you, Mayor Dimmitt. They are not here this evening because there is just one exception in their report. They asked staff to present this on their behalf. Just as a reminder, the city of Brentwood recognizes the importance of assuring public and investor confidence that public funding proceeds are being used effectively and appropriately. And as such, on November 5th, 2018, the Board of Aldermen approved Resolution Number 1116 to execute an agreement with Kerber Eck and Breckel LLP. They are a CPA management consultant, and the city hired them for oversight and verification services for expenditures from the proceeds of the certificate of participation 2018 and 2019. And they have reviewed the last quarter report and found one exception in their testing, and this was payment to the Microsoft Micro Center for an invoice totaling $39.96. Apparently, what was stated on the warrant list was understated by $23.96, and a check has been issued to correct that amount, correct amount to that vendor.
Okay, thank you. That's pretty good. Any questions of Bola on the report and the one exception? Okay, thank you. Now bring us down to the consent agenda. We have, it's like seven items under there, eight items under there, and just for the new members to the board, if you have any requests, any questions about any of these things, or any requests to remove any of these things from the consent agenda, we can entertain that. So for the rest of you, does anybody have any questions? Yes, Alderwoman Tice.
So I have a question about consent item number H. It came up with the Public Works Committee, and a question for Eric about the usage that the school district will have with the new event building, and whether they're gonna use it, and if we will be expending money for our staff to be there.
I don't have confirmation about exactly what they're gonna do. Basically, what they have attempted or talked about doing is sort of yard games, things like that. I've left a message, trying to communicate whether they'll need the pavilion or not. If they don't need the pavilion, we probably don't need to have staff down there. If we do want the pavilion, we would like to have a staff person there in that case. So that'd be a part-time staff member, $14 an hour for the four hours, so $64 would be the cost.
So maybe, could we pull, I mean, it's such a minor thing, but could we pull that off so I could add that language? I think that setting a precedent with that building that we have staff there is important, so if we could just pull that off, and I'll make a motion to amend that and see if I have a second at that point. Thank you.
Okay, we will remove Resolution Number 1460, and that will become new business item 11G. Any other questions or requests removed from the consent agenda by the board? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmuller?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harder?
Yes.
Alderman Erger. Motion carries by a vote of 6 to 0 on one abstention.
Got it, thank you. Brings us down to new business. First up is Item 11A, Resolution Number 1457, a resolution approving the ground lease agreement to be used for the purpose of a fire department training center. Chief.
Yes, this resolution is follow-up from the first meeting of the Central Core Fire Training Commission. They met in July. They elected their officers and made the motion to adopt or approve, excuse me, approve the ground lease for this resolution. And we're bringing it back to you for ratification. And the changes, updates were made as requested by this board.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Now, can we, oh, Alderman Weggie.
Yeah, I mean, I have a lot of questions. I guess the most fundamental one is that by approving this ground lease, we're tacitly giving approval for a quarter million dollars to build this training facility. Do you agree with that?
Perhaps a different dollar amount, but...
I do not. I do not, because this item has not been discussed by ways and means, and ultimately the Board of Aldermen.
So if we approve this lease now?
Right.
You would go into it, the city would be on the hook to pay $3,000 a year?
It's being split amongst all the member cities.
Okay, so let's say 1,000 a year plus property taxes and all costs on that. Do we have an estimate on that? It's some amount?
Correct.
Right, so we're committing to paying that without having made the decision that we want to build a training facility on this property?
And the lease is written for, we have three years to allocate the funds for that or the lease terminates. So if Brentwood does not commit to that, then it is terminated, or any other municipality.
Or any of the member cities, yeah.
Correct. Okay, can you tell me where that is?
It is under Section 1.2, under lease term.
I love that paragraph. If tenant does not receive said payment permits, zoning approvals and assurances within such permitting period, tenant or landlord may immediately terminate this lease by written notice to the other party.
So I read that as the necessary permits and zoning approvals, not authorization of funding to proceed with building the facility.
The preceding sentence is satisfaction in tenant's sole discretion with the construction costs and approvals to proceed and feasibility within 18 months of the commencement date. So if the tenant, the commission, is not satisfied with the cost of construction, we have the right to terminate. It's the immediately preceding sentence in that Paragraph 1.2. Tenant's obligations under this lease to construct tenants' initial improvements are contingent upon receiving all necessary permits and zoning approvals to proceed with construction of a fire training and satisfaction in tenant's sole discretion with the construction costs and approval to proceed and feasibility within 18 months.
Okay, so by agreeing to this, we have 18 months where we would be paying rent and all the costs of this property, even if we don't proceed?
I do agree with that statement, yes.
That's it for now. We'll let anybody else ask questions.
Okay. Before we go any further, can we get a motion to approve Resolution Number 1457?
I'll move.
Okay, do we have a...
A second.
A second, okay. So now we can discuss 1457. Any discussion on that? Any other questions?
The one thing I see, well, I'll go again. One thing I see that's new that I didn't see last time was this billboard lease. Can you explain that?
The property owner has an existing lease on a billboard on this site. Sorry, page went down. So...
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Alderwoman Tice.
So I have one question, and it may just be, my concern may be because the commission is so small, but if I'm reading correctly, it looks like a quorum is two, so of the three, and that with the quorum, those two could commit all three cities to something. So Brentwood could not be at a meeting, and Richmond Heights and Clayton could then commit Brentwood to some financial situation. And it just, I think just because it's, you know, when you have eight people, it's different than three, like quorum is just sort of a different animal. So are there concerns with that? Chief, Bola, Kevin?
We're trying to look that up because that question was raised in previous discussion. If you give us a minute to identify that in here.
That would be, by the way, with regard to the next resolution.
Right.
Oh, it's in the bylaw, okay, I'm getting ahead of myself, sorry. Yeah, my notes say bylaws, sorry.
I, it does bring up a, can I be recognized? Thank you. It, her question does bring up a point, though. Why did we decide on this order of resolution? I mean, why the lease first and then the bylaws and then?
It just happened.
Okay.
There is no true forethought in its placement on the agenda.
Okay. I just would have thought that.
We can move it around if you want.
The operating agreement would have been something we should have talked about first.
I think you can make a motion to do that.
If you want to postpone this and take up the next one.
Need a motion to table, what, tables?
Just move it around. It's placed on the.
Take B in front of A.
Oh.
Would that be the motion? I don't know. Do we need a motion to that effect, Kevin?
The motion would be to postpone Resolution 1457 until disposition of Resolution 1458.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's take up Resolution Number 1458, which is the resolution for the bylaws. Chief, do you care to address on, to present on that?
Very similar report as last. These are the bylaws adopted by the commission, presented to ratify by this body. The changes were made as requested by this body at the previous meetings.
Okay, so now may I ask my question?
Absolutely.
Could someone address my question about the quorum and the two, two of the three committing all three cities?
I will say that I am, I'm not certain, primarily because Item 4.09B, the bottom of page three onto the top of page four, provides that action can be taken by a majority of the quorum. Unless the intergovernmental agreement requires a greater number. And, oh, that's, that's the problem, I'm in the wrong document again. And I do not have a copy of the intergovernmental agreement, but as I recall, I think unanimity is required for things like leases and capital expenditures. But I, I don't have it at hand, and I will defer to the chief.
Well, if we could prove that it took, it would take all three to commit financially, then I would be comfortable with this, but I would like to see the language.
If we can postpone this, well, we quickly look it up before the end of the meeting, and then we can speak to that.
Chief, do you have that available to you?
I do. I will have to look that up. I do, I will have to.
We're pulling it up.
Pull this.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, I think your mic might be off.
The city issued an RFQ in May for the development of architectural design guidelines to assist the Architectural Review Board and the Planning and Zoning Commission in the review of projects throughout the city of Brentwood, both residential and commercial. We had five applicants, and it was myself and two members of the Planning and Zoning Commission and Architectural Review Board that reviewed the proposals, and the top recommendation was H3 Studio. The proposal includes a twelve-month timeframe to complete the development of the design guidelines, so this will also go into fiscal year of 2024. Yes, that is the intent. It would take some of the work off the Architectural Review Board. It would also look at particular zoning regulations and how they may differ, how the zoning regulations can be amended to aid in adoption, if there were zoning changes that are needed, if there are some things that the design guidelines can direct staff to approve versus going to the Architectural Review Board. All of those things were looked, would be looked at throughout the process. by six to two. Correct. There were a couple of members that felt that we did not need an Architectural Review Board, Design Guidelines, and felt that it, our current system is working sufficiently. But the overall Planning and Zoning Commission approved a recommendation.
But just for clarification, the architectural designs that P&amp;Z deals with has nothing to do with the residential?
Correct.
That's just commercial?
Correct.
Now, were they taking?
Well, yes. Sometimes the, the code does say that the Architectural Design, Architectural Review Board can review commercials should the Planning and Zoning Commission direct them to it, but mostly they've kept them separate.
But planning and zoning really has no say on residential architectural designs.
Correct. As long as it meets all the zoning code, it's just review at the Architectural Review Board.
Did they express an opinion on the application or the use of these guidelines in the residential part of the city? Were they opposed? Were they objecting to that?
No. In fact, they, they felt that they, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviews the architectural design of commercial projects and felt maybe splitting them out, but overall just to apply the architectural design guidelines to residential and not to commercial, but the overall Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that it apply for both.
But the staff's recommendation is to, to move forward with this contract with H3 that would put in place these design guidelines for the residential as well as commercial and look at updating our zoning codes. Is that fair to say?
Correct.
Okay.
I do have Tim Brayhan here, who is with H3 Studio, if you have any questions for him as well.
Okay, Alderman Waggy.
I make a motion to approve the contract with H3 Studio for the development of the city's architectural design guidelines.
Second. Okay, we've got a, a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Waggy.
Yeah, I am completely in support of this. I feel like we are very lucky right now that we have a robust Architecture Review Board, and all it's going to take is one of those members to move to a resort in Colorado, and we're going to be in big trouble. So, you know, I think we have to do this. I think it takes away some of the subjectivity. It tells people that are building what is the expectations of what they're going to be building, which is a good thing. I, ARB is subjective, but I think right now we have a great ARB, and they're providing a real service and making, you know, these new buildings fit into our, our community, which is a great thing. But again, it's, it's tenuous, in my opinion, and I think this is absolutely critical that we do something like this to, to make sure we backstop them.
And did we budget for this going into 2023?
We had initially included up to a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for this. As this will carry over into 2024, we are looking at the budget for that as well to make sure it's included, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else? Any other questions? Alderman Gould?
And I generally, I agree with you. I think, I think the biggest risk we have is that the ARB, which, by the way, have been on the ARB for, I don't know, fifteen years, that's pretty unusual, and then, and I think there's always a, an issue of making sure that there's enough of them to be able to, to have a quorum, to have the meetings. So I think having some guidelines is a very good thing to protect us. What are the major concerns that you've seen or that you've heard from the review board of why this is necessary?
The major concern is looking that most designs of homes are just picked out of a catalog versus really fitting into the neighborhood character of Brentwood, carrying those architectural details around throughout the development, out the home that's designed, making sure the snout, what they refer to as snout houses, the garage front is the prominent feature, making sure that that's less so, so that it doesn't just create an impasse for the, when you're coming down the street, visibility-wise, that kind of thing.
Yeah, and I guess some would argue that, you know, are you taking away people's freedom to make some choices about what they want to build and their style? I mean, we're certainly far from a planned community where every, every building has to look the same, but is there, is there any concern that this removes somebody's ability to say, hey, I really like this, and this is what I want to build?
No, I mean, they'll certainly be able to still go back to the Architectural Review Board. This just kind of gives them the design layout that the minimum standards that the board is looking at. We don't dictate particular style. They just kind of look at how that style is carried around throughout the whole structure.
And so these are, so these are guidelines, not, not code, right?
Correct.
So this allows people to go into those meetings more prepared with what's somewhat acceptable?
Correct.
And to your point, maybe there's some things that your, your department could approve if everything checks out according to the guidelines and avoid having to go to ARB altogether.
Correct, that is the idea.
Okay.
As Tim's co-partner indicated at the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's, the design, the intent of the design guidelines is to make the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Architectural Review Board's job easier, so.
And then, how many other municipalities, and maybe you know this as well, I mean, how many municipalities really have these in place? You know, is this a pretty common?
This is pretty common.
Tim, do you want to come up and talk about some of the other ones that you've, you've worked with?
Sure.
Just to introduce yourself, if you would, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tim Brayhan, principal with H3 Studio. So, yeah, there are a number of other communities that have architectural design guidelines of, you know, varying levels of specificity. But typically, any community that has an Architectural Review Board will have guidelines by which that board operates. A couple that I can think of offhand, because we're currently working there, the city of Glendale, they, they have, even though they're a very small community, they have a fairly robust ARB process and architectural design guidelines. The city of Clayton, for instance, has a number of architectural design guidelines for different areas of the city. Trying to think of some others. But, but, yeah, it is, it's a, it's a fairly, it's a fairly typical, if a community has, has an ARB, there are typically guidelines that serve as their, as their kind of operating principles.
Thank you.
And just the, the role that it plays with, what, what do you see the role of planning and zoning being relative to review of commercial site plans?
Well, we would get into site layout, landscape, I don't know if the Architectural Review Board or design guidelines would get into the landscape review, but those architectural elements that create the character for different parts of the city. He is proposing that he would focus on the town center area, the South Brentwood Boulevard, to create a unique atmosphere for it versus the area north and along the interstate. But what are those char, what are the minimum standards that the city wants to see? The use of material, the overall design, how is, you know, that kind of thing.
So, because from the ten years serving on planning and zoning in Alderman Plovka, probably twenty years, I'm not sure if he's served on it that long, but I, I think we can talk about the, the, the work that was done by P&amp;Z in looking at the design of, of site plan, you know, the site plan was always a big component of, of the job of a P&amp;Z commissioner. So what I'm hearing from you, that would still be, they would still be doing that?
Yeah, the placement of the building on the site, that kind of thing is what we would also look at.
Okay. Alderman Lockmiller.
Tim, could you explain if selected, what the process would be? Would there be public input? How do you arrive at these guidelines, I guess?
Sure. So what we're essentially proposing, there, there would be a, a pretty robust public engagement process over essentially four phases of work. And what we, the, the way that we're proposing to do this is to work primarily through a steering committee. So we would assemble a steering committee that we would meet with in each phase. We would also conduct targeted engagement with the ARB, P&amp;Z, and the Sustainability Commission in Phase One. In Fa, in, and then relative to the, particularly the residential guidelines, we would be looking at doing some, some stakeholder interview engagement with, with different residential stakeholders to understand particular issues relative to that. And then essentially, that would sort of take us through the first two phases, which are really the, the analysis for both the commercial districts and the residential neighborhoods. In Phase Three, then when we would have the first draft of the guidelines, then we would, we would still be meeting with the, with the steering committee, but then we would also bring in large-scale public open houses as well in Phases Three and Four to present the recommendations and get, get community-wide feedback.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, what's in front of this board right now is a vote on the Alderman Waggy's motion to approve the contract with H3 Studio to prepare the city of Brentwood Architectural Design Guidelines. Roll call, please.
Do we have to have a second reading, technically?
No, it's a resolution.
I thought we were on.
It's, it's.
That's right, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, no problem.
Alderman Plovka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harder?
Yes.
Alderman Erger.
Abstain.
Motion carries by a vote of six to zero and one abstention.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Tim. Next up is Bill Number 6470. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a first read of Bill 6470 by title only, please?
Number 6470, An Ordinance Approving a Revised Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement.
Thank you. Who's presenting on this? Dan?
This particular item was taken to the Public Works Committee. What it is, is a mutual aid agreement. There's several comparator cities that already participate in this, so like Clayton, Chesterfield, Ladue, Ellisville. What it would allow us is in the case of an emergency, if we need to borrow a chainsaw or dump truck, things of that nature, we call people on this list, see if it's available, and then they can bring it to us. And then reciprocally, we also have equipment that we can loan them. And in the past, we have had Webster Groves and other cities provide mutual aid, like last year's flood during the July 2022 flood, so this is it.
Okay, thank you. If we have any questions? Alderman?
Motion carries by a vote of six to zero and one abstention.
All right, thank you. Uh, thank you, Tim. Next up is Bill Number 6470. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a first read of Bill 6470 by title only, please?
Number 6470, An Ordinance Approving a Revised Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement.
Thank you. Uh, who's presenting on this? Dan?
Uh, this particular item was taken to the, uh, Public Works Committee. What it is, is a, uh, mutual aid agreement. There's several competitor cities that already participate in this, so like Clayton, Chesterfield, Ladue, um, Ellisville. What it would allow us is in the case of an emergency, if we need to borrow a chainsaw or dump truck, things of that nature, we call people on this list, see if it's available, and then they can bring it to us. And then reciprocally, we also have equipment that we can loan them. And in the past, we have had Webster Groves and other cities provide mutual aid, like last year's, uh, flood during the July 2022 flood, so this is it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if we have any questions, Alderman Lockmiller.
Um, did we consider any parks equipment, i.e. the stage or any of those?
Uh, that would be something we'd have to do separate. We just basically used the list of items that they provided, but that's something that Eric and I had kind of talked about was the band stage. You know, if we get approved for this, we could maybe get them to amend the agreement to include something of that nature.
Okay, it's not something we need to do here, you can do that.
I don't think so. This is really just like equipment, like chainsaws, message boards, things for emergencies, but I'll let him speak to that.
Yeah, I was thinking about the band stage as well. Um, it'd be great to be able to kind of put this into that agreement. What we heard from Dan and from other departments, this was for emergency equipment, so we're gonna have to work on that in a different route, but that would be something I'll be bringing to Public Works in the near future.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? We would like to have a second read on this tonight.
Motion for a second read?
Second.
Uh, any discussion on that motion? Okay, the vote is for a, uh, to have a second read on Bill Number 6470. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we have a second read of Bill Number 6470 by title only, please?
Bill Number 6470, Second Reading and Consideration for Adoption. An Ordinance Approving a Revised Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement.
Thank you. How about Chairman entertain a motion? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Motion to perfect.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to perfect Bill Number 6470 in ordinance form and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Um, Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harder?
Yes.
Alderman Erger?
Abstain.
By a vote of six to zero and one abstention, Bill Number 6470 will become Ordinance Number 5101.
Thank you. Brings us down to Bill Number 6471. Mr. City Attorney, can we have a first read by title only, please?
Bill Number 6471, First Reading, An Ordinance to Amend Chapters 400 and 500 of the Brentwood City Code relating to stormwater regulations and standards.
Thank you. Any questions on this? Alderwoman Tice?
Whenever I gave the, uh, presentation earlier, uh, I, I read the, uh, the 10 feet, which is what the, the downspouts are. Again, sump pumps are, uh, uh, not gravity-fed, they can be hard-piped, uh, to a certain s, uh, location, and, uh, stormwater BNP would be the ideal solu, uh, location for those. Um, but into the backyards or, or a location that's 20 feet from the property line is the recommendation for sump pumps. So I guess we had... So part of, part of the ordinance also is to allow for, uh, the chief building official to make, uh, variances to these conditions, because there, there may be some situations where that would be, uh, a problem.
I, I think there's a general statement of authority for the building official, as opposed to just this, not just this section.
Correct.
Uh, Alderman Lockmiller?
I guess maybe this is for Kevin. Kevin, on that same page, Item Three, on page, I'm on the ordinance, page 15. Item Three, it starts out, uh, BMP for sump and pump discharge, sump pump discharge. If you go down there, it cites 500, 1760. I don't think there's a 1760. Or will there be added?
Sections which were not changed are not included in the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Correct, that, that section was, was in the original ordinance, that.
1760 is not being modified.
And, and Item Three was not in, included or changed.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderwoman, Alderman Gould?
Um, yeah, I, so, back to the question regarding the, um, uh, I guess the 200, 200 square feet versus 500 square feet of, of net impervious improvement. Um, if we were to adjust that, make a motion to adjust that, how does that, how would that impact the permitting fees and all of that?
So currently, that is not included in the package that you see in front of you. If you would make, uh, would, would want to make changes to that section, uh, we would have to revise that ordinance, uh, and then I would suggest, uh, at least reviewing, uh, again, the deposits and such, but, uh, in my mind, you would only change the one section, changing the net impervious from 200 to 500 or whatever.
But I think there is a, right now, a 500.
Yeah. Currently, the permit fees for any stormwater, for the stormwater infill development is if you're under 500 square feet, the fee is $500. If you're over 500 square feet, then it's $1,000. So if we just did the 500 square feet, it would, and over, um, it would be, we would eliminate the under 500 and the $500 permit fee for that.
Yeah, I think the biggest concern that I have is that if somebody, you know, wants to put a patio on their back, you know, the back of their house, 200 feet, or 200 square feet is, is not unreasonable. Um, and I don't know that between 200 and 500 is really contributing significantly to, you know, the water problem, runoff problem, but now we're gonna saddle somebody with $10,000, um, design fees before they even start, plus, uh, $500 or, you know, or more, um, permitting fees. Just seems like we're, you know, really making it pretty difficult for, for homeowners to, to really improve the outside of their property. Um, and I'm not talking about putting on additions and, and all of that, I'm talking about if, you know, just an exterior renovation, um, an enhancement. It seems like, uh, it's, it's excessive. Um, so I would, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, modify, um, the net increase of, of impervious surfaces to the 500 square feet.
Which section is that, Alderman Gould, do you know?
It is Section 500.1710.
Thank you.
On Pages 11 and 12, in the definition of regulated infill development.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe.
Where the term 200 square feet appears twice, once at the bottom of Page 11 and the other, in the first paragraph on Page 12.
Okay, and the motion again, Alderman Gould, is to change the.
Modify that language to 500 feet, correct.
Okay. And we had a second on that. Okay, uh, any discussion? Alderman Weggie?
And so this is just the motion to change from 200 to 500, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I mean, I share your concern about, you know, being onerous and, and these smaller improvements. I mean, we, we talked about this, that level at great length, and when we passed the stormwater, you know, ID permit plan back in the day, um, you know, in my opinion, I, I don't like being onerous, but also the impact to your neighbors is, is a lot. That's, this is one of the complaints I get a lot from, from people, that they're getting too much stormwater in their backyard. And, and my, my position's always been that a lot of this can be done with more permeable solutions than impermeable. If, if you're just doing flat work in your backyard, you know, there are ways to make that permeable instead of just, you know, making it asphalt or something like that. So, you know, I, I haven't heard too many circumstances that they, people thought this was onerous at the 200-foot, um, I think it's been in place for three years now. I can only think of one complaint, and that was a pool they were putting in or something. So, I don't know, I, I feel like the 200 is, is working, um, again, I don't want to be too onerous on, on people, but I just haven't heard that it has been yet.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yeah, when we approved this the last time, I think we added an odd caveat that it was 200 square feet and went to the ARB. So, like a 200-square-foot patio, if, that would not go to the ARB, would it?
No.
But if you did a 400-foot bump out, not, you know, disturbing the basement, the whole thing, then that would need to go to ARB, and so then, at least in the previous round, that would then qualify, because it was 200 feet plus ARB, if I'm remembering correctly.
That's correct. The, the last sentence on the, in the paragraph to which the amendment is directed at the top of Page 12, says that lots consisting of residential real property are regulated by this article if there is creation of net additional impervious area of 200 square feet or greater, and the change or improvement requires review by the Architectural Review Board pursuant to 400.920 of the City Code.
Yeah, so I think our rationale at the time was that if you've, if you're going to ARB, you've hired an architect to do some drawings, and it's a, it's a more substantial addition than a patio, uh, even though a patio is the same pervious space, or the same pervious surface and could lead to the same runoff, it's just a different situation for, um, residents. You've hi, you're, you're, you're doing something bigger than pouring a patio. You're putting on a, you're, you're doing an addition, you know, if you put a, if you put a, uh, a garage in the back of your property, it could cause significant runoff to a neighbor, flood their basement. Um, I mean, I get, I get more complaints about new additions and the water running from the new additions than I do from people complaining about the, the fee, and I get a lot of those complaints about water running from additions or new construction, as Whitney knows.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Tony, under that scenario, doesn't, wouldn't a grading permit be required?
Yeah, so with, with the, some of the recommendations, one of the items that we talked about was, uh, to have a land disturbance permit if you didn't have other permits whenever you had a land disturbance of 10,000 square feet. So, uh, you, you'd have to have a pretty big patio to, to deserve that much.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, this is simply on the motion to amend the section, but to replace, uh, 200 with 500 feet. If there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed?
Aye.
In the chair's opinion, the, the motion fails by a count of two to three, and so is there any other questions? Remember, this is just the first read, we'll have a second read on this on September 5th, so, um, between now and then, if you have some other thoughts, we can always, uh, you can always bring those up at the next meeting as well. And if not, then we will move on to, thank you. Uh, we will move on to Bill Number 6472. Can we get a first read by title only, please?
Bill Number 6472, First Reading. An Ordinance Approving a Site Development Plan and Amending Ordinance Three, Number 3831, Regarding a Conditional Use Permit for Maize and Wheat Colombian Cafe Restaurant on Property Addressed as 91910 South Brentwood Boulevard.
Great, thank you. We already had a public hearing on this earlier tonight, but are there any questions? Alderman Weggie?
Um, hey, Whitney, can you tell me how the P&amp;Z vote on the CUP went? I don't see it in the, the report.
Um, I'm sorry. It passed unanimously, I'm just trying to remember if it was six to zero or seven to zero, so.
Okay, and, and that was with the recommendation that the CUP would be contingent on, if there are problems, it would be pulled in the future?
Correct.
And we have language that we can put into that, to that effect?
It, it's in there.
Okay.
Yeah, we added that.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Plufka?
Thank you. Um, so how, how long has this restaurant been open?
Uh, I believe they opened in, um, just before I came to the City of Brentwood, so it's been over a year, two years.
In that time, have the parking, have there been complaints about the parking?
Not that I'm aware of, which was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is why I felt they, why I think they felt that the project can move forward.
So it was underparked by our ordinance when it was first introduced?
Yes, yes.
And, and this would obviously make it incrementally, I guess, less parked?
Right.
Um, but so far, there hasn't been, I, I just was curious about the, um, I've been there a couple times, but not during times when it was super busy, and I just didn't know what the experience has been.
Um, the applicant indicated they haven't had a parking issue.
Okay.
Um, but yes, it was originally approved in 2002, um, and it was, did not meet the parking at that time with the 32 seats that the Applegate's market.
When it was Applegate's, right.
Yeah.
If I may also, the, I believe the applicant's position was that they see the exterior seating as an alternative to interior seating, not necessarily intended to increase the patronage at the same time.
Correct. That was a discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission. We are looking at all of our parking requirements, and part of the early discussion with the re, on the restaurant specifically is currently the code says for sit-down dining, you include the outdoor patio seating. For carryout, um, and drive-through restaurants, fast food services, the patio seating is not included. Um, so the, there's been some discussion, do we include it on all, or do we exclude it altogether, for both? Um, the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission on that was just to leave it as is, just for this out, sit-down dining. That discussion on all of the parking requirements will be at the next meeting, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, Alderman Harder.
I'm just really confused, because I live across the street, you know, in Brentwood Forest from that, and the parking lot is crowded a lot of times. So if they expand the outdoor seating, that would take up some parking, correct?
No, it's in the, uh, covered walkway area, it doesn't impact the parking.
Okay.
Um, so.
But it's just adding more, more seating?
It's just adding more seating, and the discussion also from CBB was that with restaurant seating, um, generally speaking, from the discussion that he's had with restaurants in that if you're fully staffed inside, you don't really have the staff to do both. So, um, like, if it's a nice day, you're not having a full, a full seating inside and every table's taken up, as well as the outside, um, because they just don't have the staff to do all of that, um, which is part of the discussion. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Alderman Lockmiller?
Is there like a cross parking agreement with the other business, cross-accessory?
Um, they don't have anything in writing, and the, the mattress store did provide a public comment, which is in the board dockets, um, that they do share parking, um, but they did have a concern with the addition, um, of more seating.
But that, uh, there was no agreement even going back to the old.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Alderman Gould?
Just to be, just to be clear, they're not, they're not proposing, um, additional seating, increase of additional seating inside, it's just the exterior, or are they?
No, they are.
They are.
It included interior and exterior. Our current code on the parking is that it's based on the total square footage of the building, um, so that's why they're non-conforming even back then, uh, when it originally got approved for sit-down dining with Applegate's, um, but since the building is not changing, um, they are non-conforming. But they were increasing the seats interior to 66 and adding the patio seating for a total of 90 seats.
And, and where are they now with seating?
Um, they were at 32, which was the original approval.
And they want to go from 32 to 66?
Yes.
Plus the exterior, which is a, which is sort of maybe, maybe used as an alternative, but not necessarily additional seating?
Correct.
Okay.
That is generally, yeah, general operating with restaurants.
And that's, that's a lot of increase of the interior seating, um, for a, for property that's already, um, pretty limited with, with their parking spaces already, so that's, that is, I could see why the mattress company might be a little bit concerned.
Anyone else? Alderman Weggie?
Um, so I know we're asking just for a first reading tonight, is, you know, this, this went to the June 12th P&amp;Z, so this has been in flow for this, this company for months.
July.
Oh, July, okay.
Oh, was it, I'm sorry.
Two months.
Okay.
Two months. Um, you know, I, I feel comfortable with this, I mean, between Applegate's, there was. I mean, between Applegate's, there was Dicky's there, there were other restaurants in there. There were times where there were two restaurants in this, in this building, with the, with the caveat that this can be pulled if, if this becomes. I would, I would make a motion for a second reading tonight, so we can allow them to proceed if we, we approve this.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for a second read. Any discussion on that motion? Yes.
I mean, I would just argue that, that even when there were two, two, there was not, there was not an increase of seating from Applegate's at all. Not much.
True.
So this is, this is dramatically increasing the interior seating potential. Now whether or not that translates to a lot more people coming in and dining there, I mean, it's, it's a little surprising to me that they want to put that much seating in this. But that's the only concern that I have. I, I support them a lot, and I've been there a few times myself and haven't necessarily seen it overly full, but maybe there are times when I'm not there that it is. I just want to make sure we're clear about the distinction of, of what they're adding. It's not just a exterior frontage and a couple outside seats.
Any other discussion on the motion for a second read? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Chair's opinion, the motion for a second read passes. Five, one? Yes, five, one. And so, Mr. City Attorney, can we have a second read of Bill Number 6472, please?
Bill Number 6472, second reading in consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving a site development plan and amending ordinance Number 3831 regarding a conditional use permit for maize and wheat Colombian Ca- Cafe Restaurant on property addressed as 1910 South Brentwood Boulevard.
Can we get a motion to perfect Bill Number 6472 in the ordinance form?
移到
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to perfect. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice? Yes. Alderman Wegge?
Yes.
Alderman... Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
No.
Uh, Alderman Harder?
Abstain.
Alderman Erger?
Abstain.
Uh, let's see. Vote of four to one and two. That's right.
Okay. Oh, good point. We need five. So motion fails. What's that?
Bill fails.
The bill fails. Great, thank you. That brings us down to Resolution Number 1460, which was on the consent agenda and was removed at the request of Alderman Tice. Alderman Tice, you care to make a motion at this point?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion that the, there is a minimal charge for the use of the park pavilion since staff need to be there and, and $100, let's say $100, so that, I guess to continue to give you the authority to do this, but have a minimal charge since that is a more expensive building to rent and requires your staff to be there and maintain the doors and make sure it stays safe.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Alderman Tice and seconded by Alderman Plufka. Any discussion on that?
It was by Alderman Wegge, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. Alderman Wegge seconded. Alderman Plufka, do you have something?
I just had a question. You had indicated when you were first up, when it was under the consent agenda, that you thought that there were circumstances where the school district might use the space, but not the building. Are we, to be clear, are we talking about only circumstances where the building is open?
Correct. Only circumstances where the building is open, because the staff have to be there to work the doors and to, to staff the building. The outside space, I'm fine with that, because...
And is that, is that, in your experience, going to be, I mean, in your vast experience with this new building, is that going to be a uniform charge, or is that going to be a, you know, in terms of what it's going to require of people?
So we built the staffing cost into the overall rental fee. For something like this, the, you know, the $100, I think, would be appropriate, would, would cover the staffing cost.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Sorry. Alderman Gould.
Yeah, just, just a question to clarify. In, in the event that somebody else comes along and says, if, if the district says, you know, "We don't need the building, but we want the event lawn and the, the amphitheater, and we're going to have activities all throughout the park," in the event that somebody comes and says, "Hey, at the very same time, I want to rent that pavilion," are we...
To be honest, we would not, because we have already other things going on in the park at that time, since the rest of the park would be utilized.
Okay, so you would, you would make the judgment that, that that's not something we'd want to do? Okay.
Yep.
Great.
Alderman Wegge.
Uh, can I just make one point? The, the request for the, the event building is, is a one-off and will not be a yearly thing. This is because Mark Twain is under, under construction, and it's for the PTO to do their annual field day. They need some space, and they would not be able to do it in Mark Twain. Again, this is not intended that this is going to be an ongoing thing. This is a one-time deal, just because of that construction.
But they're going to love it so much that they're going to make it an annual thing. That's right.
Alderman, Alderman Gould.
Just, just one more clarification point, though. Even if they don't need the building, they will have access to the bathrooms, correct?
Yes, bathrooms are open.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, if that's no other questions, then can we get a roll call on the, actually, this is just to make the amendment. Right, we, actually, we got the amendment first.
Amendment, yeah.
We have a motion to amend Resolution Number 1460 to add the requested language. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Any discussion? If not...
Motion to approve...
Thank you.
Resolution Number 1460.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, thank you. Can we get a second? All right. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice? Yes. Alderman Wegge?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Harder? Alderman Erger?
Abstain.
Five to one.
Thank you. And now we're back at Resolution Number 1458.
Mayor, if I may, with respect to the inquiry earlier by the member of the board, I'm trying to find it now. The intergovernmental cooperation agreement, which I believe this board approved in June, provides, and, and you'll recall that the language in the bylaws is, a majority of the quorum can act unless a different requirement is expressed in the intergovernmental agreement. Section, page one, section numeral two of the intergovernmental agreement states that the commission is authorized in to enter into contracts and such, provided that any contracts that commit the commission to expend an amount in excess of $60,000 or bind the commission to performance for a period of at least one year shall require ratification by motion of the respective boards of Alderman or City Council of the cities.
So that supersedes the, the, the majority vote of the quorum?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, Alderman Tice?
It does, thank you, and that was not here, and I don't remember that well from months ago, something like that. So I appreciate the clarification. I remember this, yes, thank you.
Okay. So we still have not, I don't, my record shows we still don't have a motion to approve Resolution 1458. We really don't even go into the discussion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 1458.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. So now, do we have any, any further discussion on Resolution Number 1458? Not? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice? Yes. Alderman Wegge?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Harder? Alderman Erger?
Abstain.
Carries five, zero, two.
Great, thank you. And last but not least, Resolution Number 1457. We did have a motion, I believe, to approve 1457 and a second. So any further discussion on Resolution Number 1457? Alderman Wegge.
Hey, Chief, if, if we don't approve this tonight, are, would the, the commission be able to move forward with estimating of building costs? Is this a approve now and lose it forever on this lease?
So, it is time-sensitive. However, we do have one additional Board of Aldermen meeting prior to the next commission meeting. And that next commission meeting is a commitment or lose it.
Okay, so we wouldn't have time to get building estimates or anything? We've been using the quarter of a million, the...
So we have estimated costs, not with a builder's representative, of course. We haven't advanced that far. But we have estimated costs based off local projects done in St. Louis and regionally across the Midwest. So it is scalable, which we have scaled already to come up with that cost. So we, being the fire chiefs, are quite confident in the estimation and then what this facility can look like upon completion.
And that's the quarter million per member, correct?
It is 500,000 per member.
500,000?
Yeah, I apologize, that's why I was questioning that dollar amount.
Yeah, that's my recollection, too.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Now, roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice? Yes. Alderman Wegge?
No.
Uh, Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Harder?
Abstain.
Alderman Erger?
Abstain.
And because this is a resolution, this passes at a, by a count of, with just four yes votes.
One.
And I have four...
Four, one and two.
Zero, four yays, one nay, and two abstains.
Right.
So the resolution does pass. Okay, thank you. That brings us down to citizen comments. Anybody in the, in the public care to address the board, now is the time to do so. You'll be given up to three minutes.
Mr. City Attorney?
Mayor, before the board adjourns, Bill 6472 concerning the conditional use permit and site plan approval.
Right.
The discussion I heard from the board was essentially a consequence of the board's concern that the tripling, the seating capacity is over, overbuilding the site, overburdening the site, especially with respect to parking. There is, however, part of this approval was the site plan approval, which includes exterior modifications to the building not associated with increased seating capacity. All of that is rolled into one bill. The board may wish to consider whether or not you would like to reconsider the vote on passage of the bill and then postpone second reading. If the, if a motion to reconsider carries by a majority vote, then the bill will stand in its position of having had second reading, and it could then be postponed to allow the applicant to either address your concerns, if they think they can in some way, or at least perhaps submit a site plan which addresses the exterior modifications and, and would allow that process of modernization and aesthetic improvements to, to move forward. A motion to reconsider can be made by any member of the board who voted with the prevailing side. The prevailing side was nay, and there was only one person who voted nay.
All the power rests with you. I would like to make a motion to reconsider Bill Number 6472 and request the second reading be done and a further...
Just get it back on the floor.
Get it back on the floor.
And we can talk about the rest.
Can anybody second that?
Anyone can second.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion to reconsider Bill Number 6472 and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Voice vote good for this?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Bill is now, having had second reading, is before the board for action, and I, I gather it is the desire of the maker of the motion to move to postpone further consideration of Bill 6472 until the first regular meeting in September.
Heathered correctly.
Okay.
Make that motion.
Seconded?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to postpone Bill Number, second, second reading of Bill Number 6472 and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Well done, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, because I didn't want her to not be able to do this.
Okay, we do have a request, I have a request to go into closed session tonight pursuant to our RSMO 610.021 subsection 1, 2, 3, and 12. Can I get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.